We'll call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Now, if the numbers will rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should mention that Ms. White is not going to be with us today. She, I think, is under the weather.
Yep.
And so regrets that she can't be here. Let's see, first of all, we need to, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
I have two revisions that I'd recommend. One is an action item to discuss and make a decision about the board member vacancy following Annie Kehola's resignation at the, what's the date? End of July, start of August? August 1st. So if we could add that as an action item. And then, we want to discuss the phase removal of modular classrooms as a discussion item. We put together a survey over the summer and it got, it left off the agenda. So we want to just make sure that we're all on the same page with what the administration's plan is for what to do with the modular classrooms and see if we can come to a consensus there. So, I would recommend those two changes. And then, the, when we get to the minutes item, I have uploaded a revised version of the minutes, which I would recommend that we, when we get to that point, we adopt the revised version, not the version that was originally uploaded, but they're both there if we want to look at them.
Okay. Any objections? Okay, so we'll revise in accordance with your recommendations. Okay, we're now approving the minutes. I haven't actually looked at your revised minutes.
Yeah, they're very similar. There's a couple corrections on them. There was one motion and second that was misattributed. And there, the way they were written, it made it look like the vote following executive session occurred during executive session, which it didn't. We exited executive session and then we took the vote. And so, I updated the minutes to make it clear that that happened.
Okay. Any other revisions to the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as David has, or has raised?
Approve the minutes as revised.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It is attached to the agenda in case anybody wants to.
Correct.
Okay, that takes us to public comment. Do we have any public comment, any commenters?
Hold on just a second, let me check. Let me just refresh to make sure this is current. We have no one signed up for public comment.
I think we have at least one.
Oh.
If you would please just come to the podium and.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's not showing up here. We'll have to figure out what's going on.
And if, and what we've, if we ask if you'll give us your name and then sort of tell us your connection to the.
Sure, yeah. Hi. My name is Avery Straw and I am here tonight in a few different ways. First, I'm a parent of two children at Renfro. Second, I'm an elementary teacher by background. And most importantly for this issue, I'm here as a resident of Mead Road and I'm here about the modulators. I live right across from the Oakhurst driveway and the modular classrooms. So we hear the air conditioning on our porch. My daughter falls asleep to it at night. And based on the minutes from 2017, from both the Planning Commission and the Decatur City Commission, it was my understanding that those, that CSD had committed to removing those modulators upon completion of the new elementary school. And since that's happened, I'm here to request that the modulators are removed as planned. Recently, a Facebook post from another parent alerted me to the fact that there was movement to keep the modular classrooms. And their stated concerns were that students don't leave the classroom all day except for lunch and recess. Teachers have to work out of the cart and there's no dedicated space for links. As a teacher, I have a lot of empathy, and a parent, I have a lot of empathy for those concerns, but I don't think that they're compelling enough in this case. They're not new or unique to City Schools of Decatur and they've not been the topic of any recent board initiatives. No new evidence has been presented by the district that there is a need for all stakeholders to reconsider this capital change. If the board believes the student movement is an issue, then it should be addressed in a productive and holistic way, not just through the lens of space. Residents of streets surrounding schools have to by nature be really supportive of the local schools. I know you know that we are regularly inconvenienced. Our driveways are blocked, our mailboxes are blocked. We have, our street is closed sometimes when there's filming at Oakhurst. And we always are supportive of Decatur schools. Actually, we have a lot of support on our streets specifically. We have a principal, a board member, several CSD teachers and several teachers that are not in CSD. So we're super supportive. And we even have a parade every February to raise money for our schools. But at the same time, it feels like a breach of trust that this is even a topic for consideration. The, I don't feel like the process of a survey and getting information was robust. And when I went back and looked at the minutes, the Planning Commission specifically was unhappy with the approval process for the modulators at Winona. And they said it was a really insufficient process. And that City Schools of Decatur is encouraged to improve community outreach with ample time for analysis and neighbor input. I don't feel like this process of a survey and a discussion have provided, so I'm hesitant. I don't understand if it's a real issue that we're going to discuss or if the decision has been made. I also think that discussing it so late in the summer is really hard from a timing perspective and also from like a neighborhood input perspective. I know that both of, all three of our neighbors that directly face the classrooms were all out of town when the letter for the survey got stuck in our mailbox. So I just think that the timing is not great and I don't feel like it actually is going to allow for a robust conversation. So, I request that they be removed and I really appreciate your time and your energy and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, could you just go do a shocking in the corner there and make sure we get your name correct? So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any others who wish to speak?
Thanks. I didn't know I was supposed to sign up. Thanks for allowing for some ad hoc speaking. I'd like to echo all those sentiments except for Fifth Avenue.
Could you reach yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Brad Patterson. I live on Fifth Avenue. I have a fourth, rising fourth grader and a rising first grader. I would really like the trailers to be removed. I understand that there are compelling reasons to not have them removed, but I would like to understand better what those reasons are. I sent an email June 1st to this group and didn't receive a response. I also saw the Facebook post that was going around and there were a lot of feelings and I believe, and there weren't many facts going around in that Facebook post. And my coming here is just an attempt to understand a little bit better about the decision-making process. I appreciate that the teachers would like the modulators to stay. I support the teachers. I'm married to one. Would very much like the modulators to go. And if they don't go, I would, I would like there to be some sort of indication of what the long-term plan is. That, that more than anything, because i- if there are compelling reasons for them to stay, that's great. If there are compelling reasons for them to stay, that's great if there's a long-term plan associated with their removal, because I don't think they, they should be a permanent institution on the street. Thanks.
And in case you didn't hear it, we did add an item to the agenda tonight. When we get to discussion items, we're going to be talking about modulators. I'm not sure if you were here when we talked about that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
And I think, I think we'll get there pretty soon.
I think it will be pretty quick.
Yeah.
I would imagine.
Within thirty minutes.
Knocking wood, yep.
Okay. All right, if that's all for public comment? Okay. Superintendent's comment?
I'll keep my comments really brief. We're just really excited to get the school year kicked off to a good start. We had a great cabinet meeting on Monday. We went through all the different events that are happening at the start of the year. We've got some really good plans in place. We've tried to continue to improve all those things we do at the start of the year, like the new staff orientation and the welcome back day and what that program looks like and the meet and greets. I also wanted to share that I had the opportunity to do a quick visit at Tally Street and am extremely excited. We are going to open and the kids are going to be there and it's going to be awesome. And they were working like busy bees over there. There had to have been fifty different workers at least, if not a hundred, doing all the different little projects that have to happen before school starts. And we'll hear a little bit more about that later, I think. But, very exciting. It was great to get to see the progress from when I last went at the end of the school year to now. It is just incredible how much they can get done in that amount of time. So, very good to see. We're excited to get the school year started. We're all raring to go and so, just keep us in your thoughts, because this is a busy time.
So, it's now time for the chair's report. I don't have a report. But I will congratulate you and Mr. Malouf and your whole team for getting that school open on time. That's really a huge achievement and thank you for all that you have done to make that happen. And there's one other item, which is that we need to, we need to say thank you to Annie Kehola for six years of really inspired service. It's been a joy to serve with you and to, to watch you and to follow and, you know, it's, I think you've done this, I mean, you've just been such a committed board member. You've given so much to this group and whenever something was needed, you know, Annie's there stepping in to provide it and always just good, solid judgment and a real dedication to making sure that things are going right.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you. Understand, understand why you need to move on to other things, but, and it's specifically because you put so much into this job for the six years that you've been doing this.
Thank you.
And I think the others probably.
Yeah, I mean, I echo Louis's comments and just, you will be missed, but you have been so appreciated. And I think, just looking at everything that you've done and the way that you stand up for students and put their needs first, the way you're able to articulate the issues surrounding all of the concerns and initiatives that we have has been really fantastic, because you've been such a great, a great link between the board and also the community and being able to really use your wonderful communication skills for that. And so, we appreciate that and just your dedication and your good heart. So, you've really been in it for all the right reasons and you will be missed. But most of all, we appreciate your service. Thank you.
I think Annie, your leadership, your voice, your perspective, your eloquence and charisma are going to be missed and I really think we're going to have a much less eloquent and charismatic board. So, but yeah, and you're leaving some big shoes to fill, so.
And we do have some things for you.
Oh, thank you.
You got it? I'm not quite sure.
Need help?
Yes, I need.
That's probably a good idea. I guess it's a good place, but I'll come down here.
We'll give you those after.
I should confess that Garrett was, I held the door for Garrett as he was walking in. I tried to not be presumptuous.
So there's a card and then there's.
Aw, thank you.
Something relaxing.
Aw, lovely.
And then, and then there's a.
It's fragile. Very fragile.
Could we, Annie, can we get you to take that out? Because I just would like everybody, I'd like everybody to see the fragile.
Yeah, yeah.
We know that your mother was a teacher, so we've given you.
So this is from our, you know, the Decatur Glassblowers.
That is really sweet. Well, how did you know my mother was a teacher? I never.
Never mentioned it.
Oh, that's very sweet. That's, try to stay composed. And I don't, I'm not going to speak for long, because I feel like I used my fair share of airtime on this topic last week and I don't want to repeat myself. But I will just focus on just a note of gratitude to all of you guys and David, to your staff and our community. But wanted to just share briefly, Garrett, I've really appreciated your efforts to get to know me and work with me even before I was on the board and the mentoring that you gave me and advice that you shared with me. I appreciate your attention to detail, your razor-focused, focus on the, on numbers and things that, I think details that can often go over the rest of our heads pretty easily. You, you are razor-focused on those issues. And I know you've only got a few months left on the board as well, but it's been a pleasure to, to serve with you. And Heather, you have just hit the ground running as a board member. I mean, I don't think I, we've ever had a board member who came onto the board and just added so much value so quickly out of the gate because of your years of volunteering and service that you've done for the district even before you were on the board. And so, I know we only served together for a short period of time, but in such a short period of time, you've added a tremendous amount of value and it's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve with you.
Thank you, Annie.
And Louis, you're, I feel like you're my, you're my kind of, my person in my cohort on the board a little bit, because we joined together and we ran together and, and we've sort of, kind of gone through this together and it's, it's sort of rare to have a person who has sort of, kind of been on the same track as, as you. And I feel like I've, I appreciate you letting me bounce things off of you and talk through challenging issues with you and appreciate your guidance and mentorship and support. And, and David, thank you for your service as a, as our superintendent and all of the hard work that you do. And I have never once questioned the decision of this board to bring you on as our new leader. And not a new leader anymore, but it, it was a privilege that this board got to do is to bring on a new superintendent and it's something that I'm very proud of, because we put a lot of work into that and we got the right person. And I'm grateful for the hours of work that you pour into this job and the support that you show to the board and to your staff and the work that you've done with your staff to leverage everybody's talents to the, to everyone's kind of peaks. And you, you bring out the best in people and in your staff. And you've done a really great job with, with that and for supporting our students and our teachers and supporting our priorities, including disproportionality and dyslexia and other things that we've really focused on. And I'm grateful for, for all of your hard work. So, it's really, I've enjoyed working with this board. This is a really talented group. And I feel very confident that City Schools of Decatur remains in very good hands and, and will continue to be in good hands when we have new folks to join the board. And I also just wanted to express a note of gratitude to the community, because I was very nervous about resigning before my term ended. And my natural inclination is to sort of brace myself for the worst. And I, I was anticipating, I don't know, people throwing tomatoes at me on the sidewalk or something like that. I don't know. I didn't know what I thought would happen, but I thought I was preparing myself for a negative response and, and it just hasn't been. I feel like the community has been tremendously supportive and I've, you know, will go to events or see people in the neighborhood and the two things I hear are congratulations and thank you. And when people said congratulations, I'm like, on what? I don't know. What did I, what did I do or whatever? And they're on, and they've said, I'm getting your life back and I'm kind of re-establishing some balance in, in your life and thank you for your service. And I've really been blown away and, and very touched by the, the outpouring of support under circumstances that I really didn't know how people would react and respond. And so, I'm just extraordinarily grateful to the support in our community. Happy to see that we have people stepping up who have interest in running for the open positions, who are all very, very talented and I'm excited about that. I'm grateful to Mark Wizniewski, who has so much talent and knowledge to share with the board and just couldn't think of sort of a, of a more qualified person who's easy to work with, that we're excited to have on the board. And, and so, I'm grateful for your time. I know we haven't gotten to that agenda item yet, but I'm grateful that you're willing to share some more time with us and with our community and stepping in for me, so thank you for that. So, that's, that's all I will say is just, I'm extremely, extremely grateful for the opportunity and to have had the privilege of working with all of you guys. So, thank you for all your hard work. You may not see me as often, but you will still see me. And I'm still around. So, thank you.
We look forward to seeing you at public comment.
Yeah, I will be. I probably will be.
And lots of committees.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Annie. That brings us to the consent items. So we have four items on consent. The personnel report, the school nutrition report, the financial reports, and number four, a temporary construction easement for the Columbia Drive multi-use path. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
Move to approve the consent items as distributed.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I guess not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is informational reports. Tally Street Upper Elementary School updates.
Noel, are you doing that? All right, awesome. While Noel, while Noel's walking up, I will echo what Louis said earlier, that it was a huge achievement to get the school to the point where it is. There were a lot of setbacks at a lot of different points. You know that Noel shared that at various points, some of the rainy season things that just couldn't have come at a worse time. And he has worked diligently with the folks over there. I'm pretty sure that they've probably given him an office over there somewhere, because he has spent a lot of time and a lot of energy keeping that moving forward and pushing them very hard and making sure that they were doing exactly what they needed to do to get this to open on time. So, kudos to Noel for all that good work, so.
Thank you all for the shout-outs. We're at the, we're at the goal line. We're not crossing it yet.
Yeah.
So, I'll wait till August. Just a quick one. I don't have as flashy and shiny of a projection for you today as Billy does, but I know he's working diligent with, diligently with his administrative team and his teachers to get ready. They were over there today putting up stickers and, on windows of where boxes go for teachers and things. And it was, it's really good. So I commend him and his team for, for the work they're doing behind the scenes. They've been camped out in our maintenance offices over at Tally Street for the last few months, working and getting ready. So, from a school perspective, they're, they're on target and they've got a nice open house plan and a bunch of other events and things and they've been communicating very, very well out there. I also want to thank Courtney and her team for putting together some good communications for us that we've sent out over the summer about transportation and things. Just a quick, to echo what Dr. Duty said, the building is, is looking fantastic. My, what a difference a day makes from yesterday to today. They've got plantings out. They're almost finished with your jigsaw puzzle in the front. We were going to put Dr. Duty to work, putting out pavers.
I saw the guy laying bricks and I thought that actually looked like a pretty great job that day. Just the monotony of just laying those bricks in a pattern just looked really appealing, so.
We were going to leave him over there, but yes, we have had some setbacks and we have had an amazing team who's worked very hard to get over there. I, I think since last we were all there, the paint is finally dried and, and the floors are getting cleaned. We put the last bit of flooring down in, in some areas of the lobby today and, and we had some things going on with Georgia Power. We had to replace our transformer today, but they jumped in and got that done and that normally takes about ten weeks, so.
Wow.
Kudos to them. But it's looking really good. So we'll be open for business on August 1st. There will still be a lot of dust settling and some things that me and, and my team will have to come in and do after hours and in the dead of night to, to clean a few things up. But the building looks great. I think you guys will be very proud of the work that we've done. And I think that the students and teachers will have an incredible place to learn and, and there's a lot of new things in this building that, that they'll be able to take advantage of, so. Any questions you have, I'd be glad to answer.
When do we get to see it?
I'll be out there tomorrow if you'd like to join us. You'll have to still wear some sturdy shoes with you, but yeah, I would love to take you guys out. I'll coordinate with Dr. Duty.
We'll let you get it open first and then we'll come after the students.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Going by Tally yesterday, I think I saw.
The trucks out there, was it paving?
Yes, we, we did our last paving. That was done this morning. I walked out there. It looks fantastic. They're going to do the striping and such. And they actually pulled down almost all of the fencing, if not all of the fencing, on Tally. And our final push out there, we'll be getting all the concrete in for the remainder of the sidewalk out there.
That's great.
And then we'll be putting down grass and putting in a playground and doing a bunch of other stuff out there.
That's really great.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much. And again, I'm glad to take you guys out this week, next week, or even after the school.
I'm curious, the number of new teachers at Tally Street in comparison to existing teachers within the district who have moved over, do you know kind of what that is and how it compares to the other schools?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I think if you, here's my guess, just from the little I do know. The makeup of the Tally Street school, you would not know that it's a brand-new school if you're looking at where, if people worked in the district last year versus this year. It's not like it's a whole bunch of new people. In fact, we had to turn people away because there were so many people who wanted to go. So, I think you would find it's very comparable to Fave, for instance, in terms of ratios.
Existing teachers versus new teachers.
I apologize, I just don't know the number.
No, that's okay. I didn't share that question with you earlier.
Yeah. No, I think it would be very comparable.
Okay, great. Awesome, excellent.
Thank you guys for the support and looking forward to doing a little dedication in August in a big community open house later in the fall.
Sounds great.
Thanks, Noel.
Thanks.
We're going to action items?
We are. Do the military.
What if we were to flip the modular thing first?
Do the discussion items and do the modular, that's fine.
Oh, is modular as a discussion item?
Yeah, but that's fine.
Okay, let's flip the.
No objection.
Okay?
No objection, same.
All right, I've got some things here for you. We prepared some things in anticipation of being able to add this hopefully. So in addition to the folder that you have, this is an item that Noel wrote up for us. But basically, so here's where we are. The, I don't disagree with the folks who came and spoke and said that we were planning to remove the modulators and we absolutely were. The, the reminder I'll give to the board is, we planned for building for ninety-five percent of capacity and we have space for about ninety-five percent of capacity. So we got what we were aiming for, but what that means is, we don't have enough space. And so, that was done intentionally. We were trying to be careful not to overbuild. There were a lot of concerns that we were going to plateau early, end up with a lot of empty classrooms and pay for square footage that we didn't need. And so, that caution bore fruit and we did, we did not overbuild. So, where we are right now is that it has caused us to have some situations where we would have every intention of removing the modulators, but that will have an impact on the schools. And so, what we have done is tried to figure out what can we do to make a recommendation to get us through this school year. As you know, this fall, we're kicking off our next facilities master planning process. And so, that will be the appropriate time to say, all right, we built for ninety-five percent. We ended up getting a hundred percent. We have some needs. Maybe we need to look at some permanent additions to some buildings and things like that. But with that process kicking off this fall, we don't think it's appropriate to remove all of the modulators just because we had intended to remove them, because it will have some significant impacts. The information that we've provided here in the packet, one is the survey. The survey went out to all of the staff at any of the schools that had modulators and it also went out to all of the neighbors of the surrounding area of each of those buildings. We actually have modular classrooms some people never even think about. We have them at Glenwood. Sometimes people forget that we have them at ECLC, just because it becomes such a part of the, the process there. But the ones that definitely draw the most attention are Oakhurst, the new ones at Winona Park and the ones at Fifth Avenue. And so, what we've tried to do here is come up with, based on the survey results, the vast majority of the feedback, rather, whether from neighbors or from staff, the number one choice, if you want to cut to the chase, is, let's do our best to get rid of as many modulators as we can, but still have the space that teachers need so that we don't have art on a cart and music on a cart and Spanish teachers going classroom to classroom. And so, what we're recommending is that we do our best to eliminate as many modulators as we can without causing a school to get to the point that they have to have their specials going from homeroom to homeroom. So what that looks like is, the four modular classrooms at Winona Park that were added most recently in that back parking lot, we could get rid of those modular classrooms. And so, we would still be left with four modular classrooms there. Those are the classrooms that have been there for years. On what side of the building? Is that the south side of the building?
Right, Winona Park now?
At Winona Park. Those are very close to the building. They're very integrated into the building. And the school requested that if they were able to keep them, which they very much need, they would keep those four rather than the new four, because the new four are a little bit more of a hike and they're kind of out in the backyard and they take up parking and so then people are parking on the street and whatnot. So, we would recommend removing those four new modulators and leaving the four that have been there for several years. At Fifth Avenue Upper Elementary, you may recall that that was actually a phased installation. We installed some classrooms and bathrooms and then we installed a whole nother section of classrooms. So we have a total of ten classrooms are there right now. We do not need ten classrooms there, but we do need like the first phase. And so, our recommendation there, and we're still working with the company to. And so our recommendation there, and we're still working with the company to figure out the feasibility of it, would be to remove four of those classrooms and cap off the building so we'd still have the six classrooms and the restrooms. And so it can get us through at least this year until we decide what to do next. So that would allow a lot more field space, reclaimed field space, but would still have the classrooms there.
You mean remove, remove six?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at it wrong, remove six and leave four, yes, thank you.
This is four, five, right?
That's the four, five academy, which is now Fave, Fifth Avenue, because now it's no longer four, five. But we'll, we'll get used to that eventually. We are recommending that for this year, we would leave those modular classrooms at Oakhurst in place and that we would leave the modular classrooms at Glenwood in place for two different reasons. The Oakhurst classrooms, we're recommending we leave in place because they are needed. If we don't do that, they will have several specials teachers who will have to float in the building. The Glenwood, we recommend leaving in place because they are in a position that they're incredibly difficult to take out and would be incredibly disruptive and they have found some uses for those classrooms anyway. So that's really more of an issue of something that's, it's very difficult and complicated to get those out. We've even looked into getting cranes to like try to lift them out over the building and things, but there's just some complications there. The, there's one other thing I was gonna touch on, ECLC, we had intended to replace those modulators over the summer. We ran into some issues also there of how to get them out and, and how to like logistically do that and realized that we were not gonna have time to get that done by the time school started. And so we are looking and working with Sarah to figure out, is there a way we can do kind of a phased renovation of those modulators without interrupting her classes too much? So that we can renovate them in place rather than replace them and get several more good years' use out of those. And then hopefully through the facilities planning process, we'll have a much better idea then of what we're gonna do with our early childhood program and whether or not we're gonna do something with the property across the street or some of those other options. We floated at various. The, the costs associated with modular classrooms, there's a chart in there and Noel can help us decipher that. If you wanna know the costs that are involved, they are significant. Modular classrooms are not, are not inexpensive, they are a lot less expensive than building space when you need temporary. But I would say that most likely as we go through our facilities planning process, we'll decide there may be some need for, to add a couple classrooms here and there in the district to make a little more permanent space that may be part of that conversation. The other thing I would mention is, all of the SLTs have discussed modular classrooms. That was one of the things we requested, is that the principals talk to their SLTs about these to see what their preferences are and their preferences align with what our preferences have been for recommendations here, that they would keep them as documented here. So that's the gist of it. It definitely is complicated. One of the biggest concerns we get from neighbors is about the air conditioning units and it's something that we completely understand is a big concern. We did explore whether or not there was a way to turn them off more frequently and the problem is that when we did try that, we got mold in the classrooms. They just were very prone to mold if you didn't have those air conditioners running. And while the air conditioners do cycle on and off, they are all independent. And so if you have three air conditioners along the road, it's possible they're not all running on the same cycle. And so you may feel like the air conditioners are all running constantly, even though they're cycling on and off because they're all on independent circuits, much like if you had like a window air conditioner or something like that. So I asked Noel to investigate if there's anything we can do. You may recall at Winona Park where the huge chiller unit is, we were able to put up some baffling on the fences so that the sound goes up rather than out and that made a considerable difference in the sound. So he is investigating that right now to see, is there any way to build some kind of a baffling around those air conditioners or something so that sound's not going out at the neighbors, but going up where it's not gonna be nearly as bothersome. But we're still investigating some of those options to see if there's a way we could quiet things down, because we do understand that that is significant. In fact, as we were discussing it in cabinet, there's a generator for the police department right outside my office. And right as we were discussing this exact topic, the generator turned off and we all noticed that it turned off, right? Because you notice these kind of noises whether or not you realize it. So we are very aware of that issue and trying to figure out some solutions that would be amenable to the neighbors and, and get us through at least another year at some of these locations. So that's the gist of where we are with modulators and what we are recommending. And we're happy to answer questions and address anything that you would like us to with that.
Is the recommendation a year at a time, so this is a recommendation?
Correct, to get us through this year.
I have a couple of questions, questions. I don't, I'm maybe not following the financial analysis to see exactly what the total cost is of, of the entire recommendation.
Our recommendation, it would be about fourteen thousand dollars a month, where you see our current expenditures about twenty-eight thousand dollars a month.
I'm sorry, when I took the current expenditures and I removed the, are we refinancing or? Because when I removed the six classrooms and I removed the four classrooms, that drops down to nineteen thousand a month.
So what I'm looking at is for the specific.
Did you take out the Winona ones also?
Yeah, I took out Winona and I took out the four, five.
Okay.
And I took it from twenty-eight thousand down to nineteen thousand.
I'll look at it again. One of the things that is not reflected on here, Garrett, is the, the four, five pricing.
If we purchase the four, five.
It's, it's different than what I've got listed here, because what I've got listed here is the six group.
Okay.
The original six group, that price is gonna drop significantly.
Okay.
And so that's what I was factoring in there. And, and again, mine is just an approximation on what I'm, what I'm guessing that we'll be able to, to get those rates at. We would also take the, having the older modulators at Winona would leave us in the sub-three thousand dollar range for that group of, of modulators. I'll go back and get the math in there again.
I think if.
I was the English teacher and not as fast as you two guys are.
To Annie's point, I think just that, the annual impact of this recommendation versus, it also doesn't capture kind of, if we didn't do it, I mean, what's, what's the annual?
Well, that's the problem too, is that what you're comparing, if you do it, it's a financial impact and a service delivery impact that's positive. If you, if you were to get rid of them, you would be saving that money, but it, the, the negative impact is not financial. It's, it's the service delivery and what that looks like, so that's where.
I just don't want us to look at a total annual impact that isn't the difference between what we're currently doing and what it would be.
Right.
So that we're not, you know, looking at a bigger number than we need to be looking at.
Correct, I would agree.
And Garrett, I think the other difference of what we were talking about is that number there has ECLC included, I was not including that in my numbers.
Okay, yeah, that would, that would be.
Well, and then I think the, the comment that David made about the facilities planning process is key here because really I'm thinking more than just an annual cost savings versus expense. You know, if we removed them all, but then the facilities planning process showed we needed them, I understand there's a significant cost involved in the removal and the reinstallation, so.
That's correct.
I see why there could be like some conservatism on the side of keeping what we think we might need so that we're not in, incurring the cost of removal and reinstallation without being able to recoup more than that by having them gone for several years.
Well, and it's a great point, a lot of people, you recall when I first came here, people referred to them as trailers and these are nothing like trailers. These are, you don't just pull them in and park them. It's a very complex process. Now, there are some efficiencies, if you've already run the sewer and things, you've already run water and electricity, like at Oakhurst, actually, we were able to put them back into where they had been in the past and that saved a lot of cost. Because we didn't have to redo all of that infrastructure, but the costs are still pretty significant for removal and reinstallation. So that, you're exactly right, we're trying to be cautious, but also doing our best to fulfill the commitments that we made of wanting to get rid of the modulators. We're trying to kind of split that middle ground.
Right, because I can see, you know, if I'm gonna turn this around, looking at it from, well, hey, we have a new school this year, why do we still need these modulators? But also just reiterating that we did plan for the ninety-five percent growth, which was what the community wanted at the time. I mean, we, I remember, and I wasn't on the board when that, the GO bond was passed, but I was at the meetings and I remember there were a lot of discussions about that because there's always some uncertainty and when you project five years out, and if you go further than five years, there's a lot of uncertainty. And so I remember that, you know, we didn't want to recklessly spend the community's money if we weren't one hundred percent sure that we would need those classrooms and so that was a way to be conservative there as well. So I think it's interesting to look at the, this money and really, like for me, a big part of it comes down to the finances as well as the benefits in the classroom. But, you know, being able to say that we're being careful with, with the resources of our community here and, and making the best decisions possible to not spend money where, you know, if we're just busy removing and replacing, that can be much more costly, so.
And to reemphasize or maybe expand on Garrett's point, these are budgeted costs, right? So these, we've budgeted to have to pay for these expenses, so any we're able to remove, that's great. And that's money we're saving that we wouldn't have anticipated saving at this point. So it's not like we're asking you to budget additional funding to cover leaving them, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna ask you, and this can be in the discussion come up, I can park this for that facilities discussion, but one thing I will be asking in that discussion is, for instance, for Glenwood, if those are gonna become more permanent or more lifetime of a trailer, what is the lifetime of a trailer? And then I guess the, the plan for, you know, where do they go eventually, how do they go eventually?
Yes, agreed.
I, you know, I, Mark was sitting in the chair at the time that we were doing the seventy-five million dollar GO bond and there was a real sense in the community that that was as much as could be supported at the time. And so I think that, I'm, in hindsight, I'm, I'm very impressed with the job that we did. That we aimed for ninety-five percent, we got ninety-five percent. I guess the question would be classroom sizes, and basically what I'm hearing is, we hit the mark, where we were trying to hit the mark, but we don't have the extra room to have dedicated rooms for specials.
Correct. And I'm glad you brought that up actually, because there are other solutions, right? We could, instead of having twenty-four kids in an elementary class, we could have twenty-eight kids in an elementary class and potentially free up entire classrooms. That's just not something that you even see anywhere in the recommendation, because we don't think that that's a good choice. But you are correct, that there are other possible solutions with that too.
And I, I mentioned this earlier today, but with the steps that we took to reduce the millage rate to compensate for the impact, the anticipated impact of the, the capital bond, the city covers that and the city's bond, I don't remember what it's called. But we actually, from twenty point nine, if you take our current millage rate and our portion of the city's bond debt, it's still less than it was when it was set at twenty point nine. So we did do a good job in tightening the belt for as long as we could to contain those, those costs.
I don't know if you have these numbers, but roughly, if, if a modular classroom, let's say that, for example, the Oakhurst one, if it were removed and put back. What's the cost of that compared to leaving it in place, you know?
So the average, I'm giving you just a blank average removal of a modular is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's a, like a four bank unit, so think Oakhurst, that's a, that's a ballpark, that can go up and down ten thousand dollars in a heartbeat. The average installation cost is about fifty thousand dollars. There's some, there's some things involved in bringing them in and hooking them up that you have to get some specialized stuff, taking them out is just cut it off and go.
Okay.
And there's some big variables there too, in terms of what's the site look like, how do you get them in there, things like that?
We've had to spend upwards of seventy thousand dollars to put some in, we've gone, exceeded that. And part of what Dr. Duty was talking about with the complications with the modulators, say at ECLC or Glenwood, is you have incredible topographic challenges. You know, there are these massive old oak trees that really we can't just go chop down a massive old oak tree to pull out a modular. So then that, that means, okay, well, do we rip up the playground to do it and then have to replace the playground? So there's a lot of things in there and can you get the insurance for the cranes and all those kind of things? So again, average fifty thousand dollars for a pretty simple site to get things on per four or so and a little bit less than that to take them out.
So fifty thousand per four or fifty thousand each, if you're doing four?
Four bank.
So if you're putting in six and they have restrooms like the originals at Fave, it's probably twice that to get it in.
One question that makes me think of is, you know, in some cases, we desperately need the green space, right? And so when the trailers, sorry, the cottages, the learning cottages are, are removed, the modulators, that's the neutral term there. When the modulators are removed, you know, a considerable part of that installation cost is the pad, the plumbing, the electrical. Does that stuff have to completely go? Should it completely go? Or if you leave any of it there, we won't be able to use it for?
So I'll give you a good example, if you think about Renfro, you pull in the back there where the bus circle is and we had where the modulators were. The infrastructure is still there for the sewer, for the water tap and for even the electrical post is still down there from where we have that in. So you can leave a considerable amount of it, that's what we did at Oakhurst originally. However, as codes change and as sewer capacities change with the county and things like that.
By the time you wanna put it in, it's all different.
We weren't able to just come back and hook them back up. And that, that happened to us at Oakhurst, which it did escalate our costs a little bit by about twenty.
So good intentions, but rarely.
Right, now it does save us money down the road regardless by leaving the infrastructure there and yes, most of the time we can. If there's a concrete pad and we want it to be green space, obviously that has to come up. And we take out the other costs that's incurred when we put them in, we choose to build all of our ramps and stairs because we can get them to go where we want them to instead of a prepaid package. And it also saves us money down the road, we're not renting those stairs down the road and so we save probably tens of thousands of dollars doing that, but that all goes away as well.
The other thing we'll wanna talk about too, and I think you alluded to this Garrett, is during that facility planning process, where we do end up, maybe we will see a need for some modulars someplace. I do think we need to seriously talk about purchasing rather than renting. Some of you have heard me say in my previous position in Iowa City, we never rented modulators, we bought them. Because as soon as you had them four or five years, it was much better to have, have purchased them. And so it's a little harder upfront, but it saves you money long-term and especially when you get to a point like this, they're already paid for, right? They're, they're sitting there and they're paid for. So that's something for us to consider and we also found that we were able to sell modulators as well. So when we got to the end of their useful life, if it wasn't too long of a period, there are, there was a market out there to sell them as well, not nearly what you paid for them, of course, but you did get some money out that way too, so.
When you could move them around, you know, you could also move them to a different site.
Exactly.
Are the ones that we're talking about keeping at Fave, the old ones or the new ones?
The ones closest to the building.
So those would be the older ones, but they're all, they're all within a year of each other, pretty much.
The ones that generated so much controversy are the ones that are going away, right?
The ones that really encroached, so that pretty much that entire edge of the field was unusable are the ones we would wanna take out.
And, and just so that you all are aware, I don't even know if you're aware of this, we are rehabbing the other side of the field, on the other side of the modulators and we will just come back in and continue that work if we pull these modulators out.
And the other thing, I was amazed, like I thought Fave would very much be pushing the staff to get rid of the modulators because of the green space, but because of the collaboration we've had with the city on the backside, Heather, I think you had played a big role in this as well. Getting a lot more space on the backside of Fave available and some more play equipment. When I met with teachers right at the very end of the year and this topic came up, they were not concerned one in one bit about green space. They said, we have adapted, the kids have plenty of space, they're doing really well. So they were much more concerned about having all these traveling teachers and things like that, so.
I wanna make sure I'm understanding the chart correctly.
Sure.
The phase removal space analysis, for example, for Glenwood, Glenwood says the total classrooms needed are fourteen and I think that includes the special teachers? Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, so Glenwood needs fourteen, the total rooms available without modulators is fourteen.
Correct.
So Glenwood has what it needs, including space for specials, but we're still gonna leave four modulators there.
Correct, because Glenwood is the one that it could easily cost a hundred thousand dollars to take the modulators out because of the way they were put in.
Hundred thousand dollars to take them out. Hundred thousand dollars to take them out, hundred and thirty to purchase them.
Right, I mean, my, just in looking, I, I don't disagree with any of the, with the recommendations or the analysis. From where I sit though, it seems a little heavy on the, um, on the modulars, 'cause as I look at this chart, a couple of schools, Glenwood, um, maybe it's just Glenwood has exactly kind of what it needs, including specials. And the other schools, for the most part, are just one classroom shy of what they need to accommodate specials, but yet we're still leaving four there at each school. So I hear everything you're saying, I don't necessarily disagree with it. It does still seem like three to four modulars, three to four unneeded modulars at a school seems a little on the heavy side, even for purposes of trying to project and plan for the future. That just seems like a lot to me.
And I think part of what's missing here is, I, I wish we had had time to do a little bit more in-depth analysis, 'cause I agree, when you just look at these numbers, it does make you wonder how it would be used. I wish we had had the time for the principals to list how they would need to use the classrooms, 'cause there are other needs, like at Oakhurst, for instance, there's some programs that they're hosting in the hallway. Um, and yeah, they do have some neat spaces in the hallways that are kind of big, but it's not ideal, right? And so by having the extra classrooms, they could move those out of the hallway and into an actual classroom space. So those kind of things aren't necessarily reflected here. Some of them you would like, 'cause it's natural, like you, they're built to be like four classroom units. So there are some where we may only need three, but you keep the four, because you, there's no way to seal off the building if you don't have the four, for instance. So I do agree that there are some instances where it'd be great if you could do them in increments of one, but that's pretty difficult to do.
You know, I wanna get back to the public comment, circle back, and, and say that I appreciate the people who came out tonight to share their perspectives, I appreciate the emails. Uh, I'm sorry for not responding to all of them. Um, some of that was that I needed to hear the operational side of that, because that's, you know, it's, it's our, not our role to, to dig, uh, down into the operational are the classrooms that are needed, available. And so I really appreciate the work you've done to do that. You know, keeping them, uh, is, you know, it has a, a cost which builds up over time, uh, but there's a certain security in having a little more capacity than you need, particularly when there's a lot of moving parts, and you can move someplace to a temporary space to move, you know, it makes facility stuff a lot easier. Um, and so I'm, I guess what I'm saying is what I'm summarizing, I'm hearing is it's a phased removal. We're removing ten, uh, sometime this year. I'm looking at the chart as Annie pointed out and seeing that it looks like maybe it's a little heavy at, at Glenwood, maybe a little more at Oakhurst. You know, maybe a little tight when on a park and a little tight at Claremont. Um, and I'm happy with doing that, I hope that we will have more. You know, some of this is that the conversation happened in the summer, and some of that is responding to a community conversation. And I guess the point I wanted to get to is, um, the board needs to be responsive when the community is giving voice to an issue. Uh, but the, the board doesn't need to be the, the, that, we don't need to have the tail wagging the dog, because we always get caught that if we start to go down one path because of a immediate response to an immediate concern, then all of a sudden, another part of the community shows up the next day, uh, with their concerns. And so I am, you know, I, I, I like that we're continuing to use phased removal, that the long-term goal is to remove them. I understand the concerns at Glenwood, and I think that the long-term lifetime of that classroom, I wanna know, well, when is it really gonna go away?
Right.
'Cause just 'cause we're buying it, doesn't mean it's not going away eventually. And I look forward to the, I hope we can have a robust kind of communication on this in the facilities planning process.
I agree.
And I would, uh, maybe along the same lines, um, just emphasize that this is not, I mean, I'm kinda sick about leaving the modulars, 'cause I, I understand how frustrated I would be to live across from them. Um, and I'm particularly sympathetic on the noise front with those units. I haven't actually experienced them, but I don't have any problems, um, understanding that this would be, uh, severe nuisance to, to, to me, I wouldn't like it. And the other thing is, I, I also wanna make clear what I think you already know, which is that this is in no way an initiative, certainly not of the board, but neither is it an initiative of the staff. I mean, there's a petition that started circulating, um, at some point a couple of months ago. And so I, I was caught completely by a surprise, in fact, thought it was, um, I thought it was kind of ridiculous that people were actually asking us to keep the modulars that had been so controversial when we put them in. I didn't respond to any of those comments, we got quite a number, but, but for the same reason as Garrett, which is that I had no idea what I thought about it. I mean, I, you know, my only sort of predisposition is that we did in fact make a commitment when we put them in, that we'd take them out, and that we weren't putting them in there to be permanent units. And so I think that we all have a strong preference that we honor that. At the same time, we also, as Heather said, when we were planning the expansions very intentionally and at the direction of the community, basically planned for ninety-five percent capacity, turns out that our projections were pretty good, and if you get a hundred percent capacity and built for ninety-five, you're gonna need a little flexibility, which is what the modulars provide. So it's unfortunate, I, but, you know, um, it sort of is what it is, and given the choices where we are now, I, I think that your recommendation looks like it's pretty well thought out. I regret that, um, that, that, the, um, I, I mean, I do not know, I'm not making a, 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 I don't know whether our outreach was sufficient. The fact that you tell, tell me it's not makes me think it's, it's not. I will say that, um, I appreciated the efforts that we did do. One thing that I've learned, uh, being in this position, is that we, it's just so hard to get these things right. And we try so hard to, to, to go out and, and find out what people think. I mean, one reason for at least my muteness in response to all these petitions is that I don't wanna have an opinion until I find out wha- what other people think. And I'm pretty certain that we haven't heard from the neighbors, and we also haven't heard from the gr- uh, green space or the play space advocates. And, you know, we, we did hear from the teachers and, and a lot of parents upfront. You know, but we, we did make an effort, and I think a really good faith effort to go out and, and, and find, uh, people's opinions. Um, it, it might not have been all that it needed to be, but it was a good faith effort that, that, um, you know, that, that I appreciate that it was undertaken. And, um, you know, we can continue to try to do these things better, but, but we haven't yet done it when it's perfect, and I don't know if we ever will.
Well, and to that point, kudos to Maggie, 'cause Maggie went, um, we were talking about how do we make sure to get all the neighbors? And we were trying to figure out how you do you look up all the addresses and all this, and Maggie said, well, I need some exercise, why don't I just go walk it? Right? And so she literally walked every one of these schools to make sure she'd put a, a flyer in every single mailbox. And I do think you see that reflected, at Fave, there were thirteen neighbors responded. At Oakhurst, there were eleven neighbors that responded, so it was, it was decent. And, and I do appreciate the feedback on the timing, for instance, that there are folks who are out of town and they may not get it in time, and that's great feedback and very helpful. But I do, I, I do appreciate that we kinda took this to the next level, partially because of, of the exact meeting that one of the commenters mentioned, um, where the city pushed us and said, hey, you gotta do a better job engaging people who may not even be associated with the school district. Um, and that, this was an example of that, of going door to door, whether or not you had a kid in the school district. So I agree, there's always room for improvement, but I do appreciate Maggie taking that initiative to do that too.
Maybe the way I should have said is that we always need to be sensitive, if it didn't, if, if the efforts didn't land, then we need to try to do better.
Exactly.
At the same time, uh, having been, uh, brought into your plans from the beginning, I had no criticism of them, and I felt that you were doing what needed to be done. And so I, you know, I, I thought that y'all, like I said, made a good faith effort to go out and get kind of a robust public involvement process. And, and so at this point, it's hindsight, and we can, we can do better with other things next time.
Agreed.
I appreciated the effort.
I agree with those sentiments. Um, I'll say that my tendency initially and still is to want to get rid of the modulars because they're not intended to be permanent. But I do think this is a very transitional year also, where we are going from K through three to K through two. And we are still experiencing growth. Our growth is slowing, but it's, but we're not, but we are still continuing to grow. And so I think that this process is important to really analyze the cost of keeping them versus removing them. And then also how soon we think we might need additional space at which places before we make the decision to remove. So I think, you know, I'd like to see that, that effort happen. And I, I do think it's a step in the right direction to remove these ten classrooms. And then like, like Annie pointed out, where we are close, really look carefully at that, because it, it is a cost, and you know, this, this money we could be spending on other things or could be spending on permanent spaces and additions and such, as opposed to, to running. And part of that might be we tighten our belt for a couple of years, and we do have, you know, if we're one classroom short, we do have something, eh, you know, on a cart or in a hallway or whatever, so that we basically are saying, well, we're, we're gonna invest that money in, in, you know, brick and mortar instead, where we can, where it makes sense, so I look forward to that analysis.
For further discussion, we're not voting, so I think.
We don't need to vote, we just wanted to make sure that you understood why we're making our plans and you could give us some new direction if you thought we should go a different way, so.
Thank you.
And so we look forward to the facility planning process, and you'll be hearing more about that in the near future, so. Thanks Noel, appreciate it. Okay, should we jump back to the action item, milli- the millage rate action item?
Oh, we have to do that, don't we? Okay, so our first action item, um, final millage rate. Do we require further discussion of this, or should we simply vote to approve it?
Move it and then discuss.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had to make the point.
You only have so many more opportunities to do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion carries.
All right, and then our final action item is the board member vacancy.
Oh, the board member vacancy. So a- as y'all know, Annie is resigning as of the end of the month, and the state law, uh, puts them the responsibility and the board to appoint a member, um, to fill out the term. And we're gonna vote on this, but basically what we've discussed doing is to appoint Mark Wysneski to our former board member and former chair of the board sometime, um, to fill out this term. And the choice was made specifically, um, because Mark, uh, knows the job, knows the routine, and can hit the ground running, but also because we have an election coming up in November. And by having Mark basically hold the seat, um, we're gonna let the election play out as it will without giving an odd or a leg out to any candidate, so that's the purpose of this decision. We had at one time considered, um, a different path, but this is, this is what we've chosen to do. Um, and we are grateful to Mark, uh, for agreeing to do this. And, um, at one point I realized that I hadn't sort of sealed the deal when I asked if Mark was willing, and I needed to call him back to make sure that he hadn't changed his mind in a couple of weeks since I had. Thank goodness, he said, yeah, I'm, I'm still good. So anyway, do we have a, a motion?
Just a clarification, when you said fill, serve out the rest of the term, um, on the fifteenth, did the city pass the special election so that the rest of the term lines up with the November election cycle? So that he's not being asked to fill out two years, but just to the end of the year?
I believe they did.
Okay.
I guess we need a motion, we have a motion then to appoint Mark Wysneski to the vacant board seat.
So moved, second.
On favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. So, um, we will swear Mark in at the next meeting, um, so, and then at that point, he will be able to serve as an official member, so thanks, Mark.
And thank you to everybody who submitted their names and offered themselves up to perform this valuable public service.
We hope you run.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, that was item number one, and item number two.
So the property tax study committee, can we jump to that, that's the next thing? Yes, the, um, so GSU, um, we've seen an initial draft of a report for the property tax study that we've commissioned with them. Um, Heather and Garrett and I have reviewed it and are gonna sit down with GSU to provide some feedback of things that we feel are really good and things that we think are missing, and, and just some tweaks we wanna make. Um, we had requested that they would take this approach, just because we knew this was a really critical report. Um, and we wanted to make sure that it was exactly what we needed, 'cause we are investing significant money in this and trying to really capitalize on their expertise. And so we are trying to get that meeting arranged right now. Naturally, they're also at summer, um, and at a university, summer goes even longer. Um, so there are gonna be a little bit of challenges, but we hope to get that going. The project manager on their end, um, was on vacation this week, but still responding to emails and helping get things arranged. So we're gonna get that arranged as soon as possible. And then, um, we would imagine, um, hopefully within maybe a month, we'll have a final report that we can bring to the board to begin the discussions of, of the results from that. So that's a kind of a status update on where we are with that project.
At this point, I'm talking to myself, but, um, because Heather and Garrett have been involved, but it might be time to start broadening the discussion to include the others on the board, so, uh, I think we can, we can do that. So that y'all, and we very much appreciate, um, how much you all have put into getting this to this point, 'cause I know it's been a pretty significant lift.
To that point, uh, I'd ask that if we make just property tax study and information item, uh, and scratch the committee until we have that discussion and decide what the next steps are following the final report, and how we'll go forward from there.
And I guess what I would recommend then is that maybe we have a consent item on the next agenda to rescind the previous resolution or dissolve the committee, 'cause we did have an actual resolution. Um, and then if we end up wanting another committee, um, we may wanna tweak the charge of that committee at the time, um, once we have the report, 'cause the charge may be slightly different.
I'll have a much better idea of what the charge should be once we have the final report.
So if you'd like, we can have that as a consent item, um, at the next meeting, that we rescind
Please, sounds good.
Committee. So. And then we'll start listing it as a discussion item, just the property tax study period.
Until we.
Until we have some.
Take whatever the next steps will be.
All we have left, I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask about, but we don't really have anything else on the agenda. Are we going to need an executive session?
We are not.
Okay, so the only, only remaining thing is, is future dates. I have a sense, and I think this is kind of my failing, but that we've let our schedule go and that we need to get back on track, we have monitoring reports, we have, uh, monitoring reports that we made responses to, that we never closed the loop on. We have other monitoring reports that, um, like I don't know what we had scheduled for this meeting.
We, we, we put the entire schedule, remember there was so much uneasiness on how the monitoring reports were going, that entire schedule has been put on hold until we figure out how we wanna approach it.
I thought we had decided to get your interpretation of our policies first, and we would then respond.
That's how we started.
No, we started with a full-on report that said, here's our interpretation, here's all the metrics, and here's the analysis.
Okay.
And then we'd say, well, we, we gotta go back to point one, which is that we disagree on your interpretation.
So move it to a three-step process basically for the interim, for, for this initial round.
Yeah, so I thought what we were gonna do is say, here's how we interpret it, and maybe, and then at the same time, I think it'd be extra helpful to say, and here's the kinds of metrics that we propose to, to, to capture that.
Right.
We don't get you to invest a, all the time and effort and staff resources before that.
Okay, we can.
An interpretation.
And we'll come back with, and you should anticipate, please, that we're gonna, you know, heavy, we're gonna, we're gonna say, we're gonna go in a totally different direction, but y'all start out with a proposal, we come back, it'll be all messy, but then we'll, we'll come up with an, an agreed interpretation and set of metrics, and then, and then you do the report.
Okay, we will dust that off and, and see what that means for August then.
I fully expect that, that this first year or so of these monitoring reports is going to be messy. But I think it's important that we move through it anyway, because as we continue to move through it, that feedback loop between what's your interpretation, how do we receive the interpretation, is gonna get tighter and tighter. And it will be so much less effort if we just keep moving forward.
And if we don't, then, then our entire system. And if we don't, then, then our entire system is garbage.
No, that's fine, and then the other thing, we, we can bring in August. Um, you may recall the last time we looked at the policy manual, we didn't like how the references, legal references had been done by the attorney. Um, and we had wanted to move those to notes instead, like some of the others, so that's all done. I'll have that to bring in August. Yes, exactly. So that will, I'll bring that in August as well, and, and that will probably be a regular fixture as well, like it was last year, where we just keep making those changes to the policy manual and keep making more improvements, so.
So with, with that in mind, would y'all be amenable to having a work session to actually kind of take? I feel like we're just, we need to sit down and say, "Here's where we are, here's the, here's the, the-"
Prioritize.
Prioritize, and here's the loose ends of it.
And just in general, get work sessions, even if they're placeholders, get them on the calendar?
So we do have them on the calendar. We have, uh, August twenty-seventh as a work session. And I shouldn't say, I don't know if they're on the Google calendar, but that governance calendar we put together before, the next one's August twenty-seventh, um, October twenty-second, uh, January twenty-eighth, February twenty-fifth, March twenty-fourth. Um, and we may end up wanting more than those as well, but.
I think it'd be valuable to me just to go through and, and walk through the schedule, what we've agreed to. And, but, and the other thing is collecting the loose ends, 'cause I know that the other monitoring reports resulted in to-do items that we haven't done.
Yeah.
And we just need to figure out what they are.
Good.
Um, I wanted to make sure that we close the loop on the, I can't remember the name of the school, the conference in Colorado, that we are all on board, we're all going, and that arrangements-
Yeah, I think Ashaki, did you start with our reservations and things for that, the trip to Colorado for that school?
When it was fourth, I was waiting for you guys to say, "Yes, we all are going."
We all are going.
It's funny, I was, I was invited to, uh, something, um, I think today, it's October ten through thirteen.
Oh, really?
What, what are the dates of, and I, and I've told them that I can't, I can't do it.
I'll have to look that up again, I don't know off the top of my head.
It was gonna be, I, I think it's actually happening, October ninth through eleventh. So we'd probably need to get there at the evening of the eighth.
I might be able to swing by. Anyway, yes, we committed to do it.
We will look that all up tomorrow and get moving on that.
Westminster Public Schools.
So, swinging back to the work session, um, can we set a time now?
Sure.
Or do we wanna do it by Google?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Other than the, before the August twenty-seventh one?
I was thinking if we could get one, it would be good. What's, what's August twenty-seventh scheduled for?
We don't have a topic for it, that's just when we had planned to do a work session. I think we had done it that way, just because of with the start of school, it can be pretty challenging to, i- i- if we have to prepare stuff, it can be challenging.
What's that one the gentlemen have to prepare for, if that's okay?
Which one?
Which, I was thinking not waiting that long, that we would, we would have one like in July, if people are around. I just wanna get a, I want, get, get a, yeah, I feel like we've lost a little momentum.
Are you doing that so that Annie has to come?
That's right. We would probably have to do the, we would have to do next week. If we get into the next week, we're gonna run into the meet and greet schedule, um, in evenings.
I mean, next week works for me, if it works for me.
I'm, I'm not here. I'm here on Monday, but only Monday, so I'm gone for Tuesday.
And then that first full week of August, Maggie and I have a conference that we will be at, so we'll be out three of those days.
Is Monday an option for you, Garrett?
It's my birthday.
Oh, jeez.
We're really good at matching up with birthdays in your, in your house.
I guess we're gonna have to wait until August, but, um, maybe we can have a little email communication about,
you know, I always try not to celebrate my birthday, so, uh, let me get back to you, and I may actually work.
Okay.
'Cause then that would prevent anybody from trying to celebrate my birthday.
Except, we now know it's your birthday.
Fifteenth.
Oh, fifteenth, I was doing twenty-second off my week.
Fifteenth is yesterday.
Oh. The twenty-second is my birthday, so.
Yeah, I, I, that is what we're talking about, the twenty-second.
No, that's, that looks like it would work for me, fifteenth.
Fifteenth is today.
No, today's the sixteenth.
Okay, so I just, twenty-second is my birthday, that's next week.
Now we know the root of why we have difficulty scheduling.
So Garrett's gonna check and decide if you're-
Today is July sixteen.
On the twenty-second.
It's Tuesday.
All right. Is there anything else?
I have nothing else.
Do we have a time, are we sticking with?
So, I think we've been doing work sessions at seven.
Seven, okay. Hard stop at nine.
Yes, exactly.
All right, are we adjourned?
Okay, thank you.